Meeting by orders at 6:31. We are going to, as I pull up the agenda. So approval of the agenda as may be amended. Can I get a vote to open up or a motion to open up discussion on the agenda?
A move to open discussion on the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Oh, and just for everyone's awareness, when one select board person is on electronic, we have to do a roll call vote. So when I call for a vote, we're just going to go around the table. It's in our rules.
What are we going to discuss on the agenda? Wouldn't we just make a motion to approve the agenda? That may be amended?
When we take a vote on...
No, I'm not asking that. Please listen to me. The motion on the floor is to talk about the agenda?
It's to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda.
Well, okay, you said discuss, so...
Okay, well, it's to approve the agenda. Is there any alterations that need to be made?
Call question?
There are none. All in favor, we're going to go around the room. Ricky, can I get your vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
I also say aye. Unanimous pass. All right, approval of the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 11th?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. We are going to start with August 11th.
My hand is up.
This is for the board, this is not for the public, for the agenda.
But the minutes are now properly recorded.
We're going to go over this, and then if we have an issue, we can, or if we have a comment, we can adjust that. So does anyone have issue with the minutes of August 11th?
I do.
Okay, I'm talking to the board right now. Anyone else?
I believe I may have, let me just look.
If no one else has anything. On number 11, select board member comments concerns regarding the 20% number for health care. About halfway through in paragraph, select board staff, or, sorry, select board member half stated that the town employees asked him about discussion held by the select board on the July 14th, July 28th meeting, which select board half reminded he was...
Not present.
He was not present. Right. Is not present during these meetings, increase health care premiums up to 20% from the current 3%. That 20% is not a number that is being discussed. We have not had discussions on this. So I think the two alterations is, you, Jim, if I'm right, you were not there, and then...
Well, I was here on, I was here on August 11th, and I specifically said that I was not here during the July 14th, July 28th meetings. I reminded that I was not present, so thank you for making that change there, during these meetings, to increase the health care premiums up to 20% from the current 3% in an effort to reduce the budget, which he confirmed the discussion. So that's what I said on August 11th, so I don't know how you're going to change what I said, but thanks for picking up, I didn't see not.
Yeah, it's not there. All right, we'll just make record then that the 20% is not a number that we're currently discussing, as we don't currently have a discussion of that number, we haven't had that yet. So we can just make a separate note, I guess, in this, this meeting packet.
Well, you could say that for today.
Does anyone have any other changes?
Under the, I have a question, okay?
Sure.
Under the budget discussion, there is a discussion of the town manager's salary. Since that is, I've been told now by several people that it should be done in executive session, should that be struck from these minutes?
Why?
We can make, we can make that.
So you want to strike what we talked about, and when all I did was read out the contract for the town managers, I exactly did on March 24th?
No, I'm not, I'm, Jim, I'm not disagreeing with what is written, so please don't, don't confuse that. The question is...
Should have been done.
That should have been done in executive session, from, from, I've been, being, now being told by multiple sources, so the question is...
Which sources are telling you that?
Well, I've been told by Patrick in his review with the town attorneys, for instance, as an example, okay? So the question is, should that be stricken from these minutes? Where it was improper, improperly discussed?
I wouldn't say it was improperly discussed, but if you want to take it out, I mean, there's some video of it, there's, there's two videos.
Understood.
There's minutes from March 24th that state the same contract, word for word. I read the whole contract out, and I also said in this meeting on August 11th, no, Bill, let me finish, if you got what you wanted to say, but this is what was said, this is, I don't really care if you pull it out, but I mean, you know, you want to pull it out, pull it out, but it's already in draft minutes.
Yeah, I, I think that on this one, we may have unfortunately missed the, missed the mark on the first one, so I have to record as a record.
That's okay.
Going, yeah, go, I mean, that, again, and we can vote on this with everyone, obviously.
If you guys want to remove it from this, go ahead, I mean, the minutes aren't going to have every single word that we say.
Right.
Except for that day, I read every single word of the contract.
All right, so do we, do you want to vote on that one, Bill, or do you, are you finding...
No, I was just asking a clarification on that, okay?
Yeah, I think it's just in the future, we need to be better about it, and that this is a reflection of what happened, unfortunately. All right, so, so the motion is to approve the meeting minutes for August 11th, 2025, as amended, that we discussed. You got Jay? Yes, no?
Um, yea, yea, yes.
Jay, sorry.
Yes.
Jim?
Yep.
And Ricky?
Yea, yes.
I also say yea, we are in agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 15th.
Minute of August 15th, this was a, whoops, sorry, this was special select board meeting. Doing a motion to approve the minutes as may be amended.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I made a motion.
So is there any, any changes that need to be made to this? So signing of warrants? Nope. All right, hearing none, going to call vote then. Ricky?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Does that, closes that up, I believe. Do we have one more? Or no, you said a double?
That's it.
That is it. All right. Was there a question about the process of meeting minutes from the crowd, from the public? I can't see where it is, so if you go around from left to right in the blue shirt and see your hand up, can you state your name?
Andrew Gethin.
This is not open public yet, just, I saw a question about the meeting, meeting minutes, the way we do them, so yes, go ahead. Yes, in the blue shirt.
Always have blue shirts on.
Yeah, so I'm going to start, I'm going to start. Andrew Gethin, citizen. Citizen, taxpayer, voter. I read for the minutes, and there were some discrepancies, not everything was properly recorded. Last meeting, Jim Half called me names on record. I would like all of this to be written. I met with the lawyer, and we need the minutes recording of every single word that he said in my direction, because I'm going to be pursuing some other actions. Second, Jim also mentioned that Abby was hired by him, and she was promised to work on, from home on Fridays, and that's a crucial piece that should be also recorded in the minutes, because we had discussed for the last few months at these meetings here, and most of people here were not present, because the town employees had an issue with one person who was being allowed to work from home, and the rest had to show up on Fridays and work at the office. So this is a crucial piece of information that actually pinpoints that Jim knew about it, and he actually, he is the guy who hired Abby, based, and promised her that she can work from home. And that was, that was wrong, and obviously, you know, we, I just wanted to report, you know?
So since a citizen is going to try to make false comments here, yeah, I did call Andrew and ask, and we could put that back in the paper, in the, in the video today, after a year and a half of being attacked multiple times, so, and the whole family, so, you know, I've been called and asked before too. I didn't call you the full name, but then also, let's get back to Abby. I never said that I hired Abby. I never said that I hired Abby. Patrick, please.
Jim, right now, I know, right now, we're talking about minutes, how we're approving of...
Yeah, but whatever, since you watch this on the record, and it's being recorded.
We can do it later during select board.
Sure, shut me down, Patrick, whenever you want to, thank you.
Okay. One of, I saw another handle there, about how we take minutes and be minutes.
Hey, Patrick, Don Martin, how are you?
Good, thank you, Don, I'm doing well.
My one question, I have this email that's going back and forth with this, with these benefits of 20%. Is that from the select board member, or is that from the, the pay job during the day?
Sorry, I don't think...
Is zoning commissioner, is that coming from the zoning commissioner, or the select board member?
Asking who wrote the letter to the employees, and he's, he's trying to say that I wrote the letter to the employees.
I'm asking who did it?
I don't see what he's trying to say. Could you say it one more time for me?
I'm looking to find out where this, this email came from. Did it, did it go to the select board member? Did it go to you? Where did it come from? Who originated it? And how did it get to the select board member?
Patrick, I could answer that if you like.
Okay, go ahead, I believe that, yeah.
So, Don, two employees came to me and asked me if the health insurance was going to be increased by that number. I explained to them that that hadn't been discussed by anyone in a board meeting, and where it came from, and they told me that our zoning administrator told them that while sitting down in the basement one day. So I sent an email out saying, well, if you've seen it, acting as a zoning administrator, you don't have the authority to make those decisions, or as a sole select board member, so, and that the information was inaccurate.
So since, Patrick, we're going to go back and forth and start talking about that, I would like to go back to, since you're letting Dave talk here, I would like to go back to the minutes of August 11th once again, which is basically states that I was not at the July 14th or the July 18th meeting, and that this was brought up during you guys, when you had the board meeting, and when an employee comes to me and talks to me at some point, I can't speak.
I think the question that was being asked about the email was where the email came from, and Dave answered that, so thank you very much, Dave. Next, we're going to move to citizen comment and concerns. Again, I don't see it well from in here, but we're going to go around the room. George, I can tell it to you, so would you like to start?
Yes, George Brett, I'm still asking about the $204,000 on the solvency, how it was paid. Do we have any information on that?
That information was given to you...
It was not given to me. We went through it on the other meeting. What you gave me was what some select boards said. I have a piece of paper here saying that in June, which I gave them last meeting, it said it wasn't paid, but it had to be paid somehow. I just don't see how it's being paid.
So, well, from what we could find, George, from going through the Nemrick accounts, and where that whole transaction happened, it was paid out of three separate restricted funds from where, from the, the necessary funds, from here, from REC, and from, or from the library, and from the town office, and it showed that that's where everything was paid.
So they were restricted funds.
Well, that would be for the restricted funds for what they were, they were there for. I don't know what happened, I wasn't here, the only other things...
It's weird, because I went over, because I'm going over the books, because I'm, like, I'm going to get a petition together, have it ordered anyway, but, I mean, this piece of paper here states a whole different piece, that's your order. It's not my order, it's yours. I mean, I have it right here, if you want it.
That'd be the audit from '24. So it'd be last year's audit. The '25 audit has not been done yet.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you the information that we found in Nemrick, and that showed exactly where things were...
So a piece of it was paid out of the REC?
No, a piece of it was paid out of the library.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the town garage, this building, and the town office down on River Road.
Is that the normal way to do that?
I have no idea, I wasn't here then.
I'm not blaming you.
Yeah, I, I would love to...
It's just odd that, you know, it said it wasn't paid, and now I asked how it was paid. And you didn't give me that information, you were saying it was coming out of separate pieces.
From what I found, George, and in the Nemrick account, it appears to be paid. It doesn't appear that, there, actually, there was some, I'd have to look it up again, I'm sorry.
But there is not humane book saying it's paid.
So it does show on the Nemrick account, though, when you open the accounts up, it does show where the project was paid. The way it was paid is the, is the sticky part of it, is, was it approved by a board?
Was it voted for that too?
Was it a budgeted, was it approved by a board, was it supposed to go to a bond vote? The pay recs were signed, you know, the warrants were signed, so I wish I could tell you more. It's very odd.
Yeah, and it's not a little bit of money, it's $204,000.
But from what I, and I can certainly...
But it might have been second moved out of to here, that they could put up a solv...
I can, well, no, they did it two or three years ago, I think. I mean, I, like...
Well, was it done in the last year? I mean, you said that was 2024.
2024 was done, that's when it was implemented.
If it was done two years ago, that went into 2024.
I will, I will get the Nemrick information out again, and share it with you.
You just get on paper, you just kind of look for it. Also, how many town employees are on health care?
I have that information tonight. I can read this, and then I can give it to you, if you'd like.
Thank you.
So for the health insurance, there are five on the family plan, two on the two-person plan, and 15 on the single plan.
So we have 17 altogether?
Uh, that would be 22.
22?
Yeah, we have 52 employees altogether.
Did you say 5, 2, and 15?
Yep.
That's 17. 19, 19, not 22.
5, 2, and 15 would be 22. Would you like to...
22 employees you have ordered, right?
I'll give this to you when we're done.
Yeah.
Any other questions, George?
That's it, yeah. Oh, I do have one thing. Bill, you're going to do PowerPoint, and you guys are going to use that screen, we can't see it, so...
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, hopefully not...
Make it a little bigger, so we can see it over here.
First time, first time, Kyle.
No, I couldn't see a word on it.
We tried, I apologize.
No, it's nothing good.
Yeah.
Coming across the room, is there any other questions for the first round? We will have a second round, citizen comments and concerns. I see one in the back left. Again, if you can state your name, because I can't see that.
John Wysocki, resident Killington. So do we have any answers from the last batch of warrants that were issued that had redundancies and duty fits included in them, as to...
Yes.
Why, how, and so on?
I can answer that.
My understanding is that it was just a double print. They read it earlier, and then that one got reprinted, and that one got double paid. So, and an older piece of paper got stuck in with the newer piece of paper, that's all.
So I asked office after the meeting. They'd already printed the warrant with some of the e-checks listed to the vendor. The man early selected the vendors with the check numbers to be sure they were on the warrant, they weren't paid twice. So they were the e-checks that were showing those twice, that they were not paid twice.
But clerical errors nonetheless?
Yeah, you can say that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm not quite done yet.
Is it a clerical error, though, if the, if the machine, I mean, if the system does it, I mean...
Well, it was reviewed and brought to the board to be signed, so somebody had to review that.
Do you have one more question?
I do, actually. I'd like to follow up on the contract for the town manager's position, so have you ascertained that...
Did anybody speak about that in executive session today?
I'm going to ask that based on the running for select board positions, when everybody was so up on transparency, and, you know, full disclosure, and all these other great things that we talked about, but we don't appear to want to follow through with, that in the benefit of, you know, something like Mr. Gata is very concerned about things that have happened in the past with town managers, and interesting financial affairs, this seems to be falling in that same direction, so I think it would be imperative for the board to discuss, without maybe naming any one particular person's name, we can just discuss it as the town manager's role, or the town manager's contract, and I think it should be done in open, because it is a signed contract. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm still speaking, Patrick. We are talking about an agreed upon, signed, legally binding contract.
Anything further on this question?
We are speaking on a signed, legally binding contract. So it's not like we're talking about private business, this is town.
Can one of you just talk at once? It would be nice. You're over talking on a citizen, which isn't right neither.
Yeah.
Either way, we're in citizen's comments and concerns, so... So do you have a copy of the contract yet?
I couldn't hear that.
Do you have a copy of the contract? A week ago Friday, you did not yet ascertain a copy of said contract.
That is, so that's part of an issue that we're going to be discussing in executive session. Anything related to this, we'll be able to talk about more when we come out of executive session.
I will not be attending the executive session, just to put it on the record, since there is a contract, and it was read out loud at the time, and, I'm sorry, Patrick, you and Ricky read it, Dave read, signed it.
All right, and we will, we will discuss that in executive session. If you don't want to join us, that is your prerogative.
I don't really trust...
We do have, we do have, what we, part of this that would be discussion is the legal advice from our town council. So that is what we are going to be discussing.
I'll wait for your writing.
I would like to comment too.
All right, go ahead, Andrew.
So Andrew Gethin, after doing volunteering and spending weeks and weeks taking through paperwork, looking for fraud, abuse of power, I've uncovered that lots of documents were missing. So what happens when the town employees, husband and wife, nepotism, work on the weekends behind the closed doors at the town office, and later the documents are missing? And when I, when I went through the room section, there were a bunch of documents that later reappeared. I'm just saying that...
That's what happened with the...
Jim told me and everybody else in the room that they hired the new town manager for $145,000. It was printed in the Mountain Times, and a lot of...
Hey, Andrew, we're going to be talking about this in the executive session, so any questions?
I'm just saying that, how can this document be missing from the town office? They never got them. When he signed it, he requested, like, can I have a copy? And then Jim was withholding the document, because he was going to use it as a leverage against him.
Andrew, you're going to be discussing this later in the executive session. Are there any other questions unrelated to town manager contract? All right, seeing none, moving on. Listers, do we have a lister present? I believe we pushed this before to...
We have Krista Maja here.
Hi, Patrick.
Hey, Krista. Can you walk us through these errors, and what, any, what, if any action we need to take?
Um, yes, so I believe that you all should have a notice that was provided weeks ago for two errors and omissions. One was for Kamatsu Financial Limited Partnership. It was documented that they had $234,799 worth of personal property. I made the mistake that it was removed prior to April 1st, I did not catch that, and so they were sent a bill for taxed on that amount, and they have requested that that is remediated. So that is one of the items. Second is...
Can we stop right there?
Yep.
So it should be zero.
Correct. Correct, yep.
So why don't we do one at a time?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the lister's errors and omissions for Kamatsu?
Yes.
From $234,790, that at the time of April 1st, they had $0 here, and that's what it should be. And for those that don't know, that is not taxed at the state education fund rate, it's only on the municipal tax rate.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. I don't believe there's much, if any other questions for the questions on this, now's the time from the board. Hearing none, I'm going to go around. Ricky, yes or no?
Yes.
Do you approve?
Yes.
Jim, do you approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Jay, do you approve?
Yes.
I also approve unanimously. Can you move to the second one?
Sure. So the second one is for Green Mountain Power. That is provided to us by the state. They did not get it to us in time, so their previous year amount was utilized, so that was the 179,749. Their accurate number was actually 205,457, and they would like to be taxed on that amount, not the previous amount.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the lister's errors and omissions for Green Mountain Power, upping it from $179,748 to $205,157.
I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions on this? Hearing none? Ricky?
Yes.
Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I'm also yes. And I will come sign these when I go back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Do you have anything else, Krista?
I do not.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. We've, next, we have Board of Record Control. Peggy, are you there?
I'm here, I'm right here at the front table. I just wanted to start off with letting you know that I approved a special events permit Killington Distillery for an event at Basin Sports on October 11th. And now for your approval, I gave you a report. The first one is for a third class, it's a renewal for Casey's G, which is Casey's Caboose.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward Casey's G?
Yep.
For a...
Third class.
Third class.
Yep.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second, all right. Any questions? Ricky?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Also a yes for me, unanimous. Do you have another one, Peggy?
Yes, I do. Killington Restaurants, an outside consumption limited permit. It's for, it's going to be at the Pyco Mountain Base Lodge for their Brew Fest, September 20th.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward Killington...
Killington Restaurants, Inc. It's at Pyco Mountain Base.
For Pyco Mountain, outside consumption.
Second.
Any discussion on that? No? Ricky?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I'm also yes.
Okay. Next, again, Killington Restaurants, Inc. It's a third class for the Bear Mountain, at the Bear Mountain Base Lodge. It's for the Spartan Race on September 13th through the 14th.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward Killington, Inc. For the Bear Mountain Facility, Outside Consumption for the Spartan Race.
Third class.
Third class.
Second.
Get a second. And Jim? All right, any discussion? I'm going to change it up. Jay, I'll go with you this time.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
I'm also yes.
Okay. I'm going to skip down to the Wait Family Restaurant LLC. They are the Back Country Cafe, and they're applying for the outs, for an outside consumption permit.
What was the name again? Wait?
Wait Family Restaurant.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with the Wake Family Town Restaurant, otherwise known as Back Country Cafe, to move forward.
Did I give you, I thought I handed out.
It's in here somewhere.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Ricky?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I'm also yes.
Okay. Last but not least.
Last one. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. We have the Condola, Inc. It's a new restaurant at 2841 Killington Road. Rick McConaughey, I believe he's on, on Zoom. He's applying for a first and third class, and it's, um, he's leasing from Sal's Holdings. Is his landlord, and I, he did provide a copy of his lease, which was in the portal. I think I got it covered.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with Condola, Inc. For a first and third.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like just for Rick to introduce himself or whatever, since he's got the time being here.
Yeah, would be nice.
Thank you. So I'm Rick McConaughey. I bought my home in Killington in 2021. I was working in Singapore at the time. I also own B Music in Rutland on Woodstock Avenue. Bought that from Brian Hobbs last fall. And so, you know, this, there'll be a nice connection with B Music and this restaurant bar.
Thank you. We're excited to have you as part of the community.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Rick.
Pardon?
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, no, no problem. Can you call you guys?
Yeah.
Call the question.
All right, so we have a motion to approve on the floor. Ricky?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, for both.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Yes, for me also. Thank you. When, when do you plan to be opening up?
Uh, we're targeting like end of October, beginning of November, something like that.
Nice, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Peggy.
That's it, thank you.
Next, we are going to be moving to public works update, FEMA TIP update, and then these couple of subcategories. Abby, are you on or in the room?
I'm here. I'm going to come to the table because I have a few documents that have to be signed.
Excellent, thank you. And are you just going to roll through your section of A, B, C, D?
Yeah, so first up is the Trailside, Trailview and Great Trail Culverts bid for flood recovery. And the board was provided with copies as well as a summary of the bid results from Enman Kesslering. Enman Kesslering reviewed the required attachments to the bid, and there were actually two that we should discuss. KT Hathaway, they didn't provide the bid bond with, by, by the time the bids were due. They provided it the next day. And then Mozier Escavating didn't include the disposal location as an attachment. So that just leaves Bird's Eye Building, which is the high bidder at 1.34 million. So my, based on that, my recommendation would be for the board to rebid the projects out. We have time because these projects will not be built until, the earliest they would start is July 1 of next year. And so basically, we have time to give it another month or two and rebid this out. We'll use the bid results to build the FEMA project, which part of the, the big, the real reason for the delay to next year is that FEMA needs to approve the project and the cost before we can give a notice to proceed to the winning bid. We can award the contract, but we have to wait for the notice to proceed, so we have time.
So are you asking the board to make motion to rebid the section?
Yes, yes. That's correct.
Can I get a, um, a motion for the, uh, to rebid the contract that Abby just read out?
I, I just want to make sure, because I'm reading the town of Killington requests for sealed bids for COVID replacement construction starting July 1st, 2026. And it goes off to say Trailview, COVID 112-06, Great Trail, COVID 8801, and Trailside Drive, COVID 86-06. And when I'm reading through it, and I did pick up on what you were talking about, Abby, where in this does it say that the location of disposal? I see the bit about that bids will be received for a single prime contract. Bid shall be on a lump sum basis as described in the bid form. The project is financed with federal funds. Project requires bid payment and performance bonding. But I don't see here where there is that check mark for Mozier for not putting in his location.
So in the full bid packet, the full, the bid documents, it is one of the attachments, debris disposal plans, including DPS location of all debris disposal for the project. And that is a FEMA requirement. There are a couple of trees that will need to be removed, and we'll have to let FEMA know where.
I was reading, I wasn't reading the whole contract. I was reading this.
That's just a summary. That's the bid advertisement.
Right, okay, and then they all received that, so.
The full bid packet that they need to respond to.
Is anybody on from?
Motion, so that we can discuss it further. So the motion would be to, again, it would be rebid or, or put this out to bid again?
I'll make a motion to not move forward with the current contract, uh, the current bid.
Okay, do we have a second?
A point of clarification, does that mean there will be a second motion to put out new bids?
Jim, your motion?
I don't see it on the agenda. And I don't know if we, I don't know if we actually really put it out. Did we motion at one time to put it out for a bid? Or you just, like, this is automatically what you do?
So the bids need to come to the board because per the purchasing policy, this is not, it's, it's above the maximum limit that we can approve in-house anyways, but it's also not a budgeted item.
Right.
So the board didn't necessarily need to approve to put it out to bid, but they do need to approve, like, if you're not going to award this, then we need to rebid it. We have 60 days to respond to these bids.
So my motion is on the floor, and then their job is to put it out.
Okay, yeah. Okay, it's good.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, so we have a second on that. So the motion, just, Jim, could you restate that for me? The motion.
The motion is to cancel out the current bidding process, so make it that simple.
All right, thank you.
For, for further reply for this project.
I, I second that. There was a hand from citizens?
I just want to go around the table first, if there's any questions. So, uh, the hands, the hands from the audience before we make the motion?
Yeah, Craig Bojer.
Hey, Craig.
No, F, I'm just curious if the other contractors had disposal site. I know it's on here as F. And I did not have, I have a site, I just did not have a GPS coordinate at the time.
Yes. They do.
Do the contractors have GPS coordinates?
Mm-hmm.
They do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so again, motion on there is to not accept these, which would then trigger.
And there is a, there is a question, there is a question from online?
Uh, thank you, Bill. Go ahead. It says, a question whether the town can refuse a higher winning bid on the basis of other lower bids not complying with detailed requirements of this education.
Well, we don't really have to get into it right now because I don't know who the question's from, but. Oh, Kurt Peterson. We're not there. It's, we're following the rules and there, it wasn't, you know. I mean, if we really did follow the rules, I guess, here, then the highest bid would go to the million dollar one, and then Abby is saying that she is suggesting that we put it back out for bid.
Yeah.
Patrick, could I just clarify to? The bid advertisement did also state that's, and I'm just summarizing, but this is public information. The select board reserves the right at its sole discretion to call for rebids. That is part of the bid advertisement. And I would like to say that I think I would prefer that the motion say that it is a rebid rather than cancel.
I would.
I think that's clear, clear.
Can you second?
I, I second the modification to Jim's original motion.
You remove your second, Jim removes this motion. That motion died.
So I would like to say that the, the select board will take the right at its sole discretion to reject this bid and rebid at a future date.
All right, thank you, Jim. Can I get a second on that one?
Second.
All right, um, and then we're going to go around the table. Ricky?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I'm also yes. Thank you. And thank you for that clarification point, Abby.
Yeah. Next is Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund, RF 3-555-3.0 loan documents for water contract four. The board had actually previously approved and signed some loan documents, but before we had submitted them and completed the process, we discovered that the loan documents actually were not drafted in the way that is in the best interest of the town. A good portion of this loan is going to be forgiven. It's about 5 million. So ideally, the loan documents would be drafted, so it's two loans in one loan document. So that the portion that is forgivable, we can, which we have bonded, we have taken, taken out a grant anticipation note, and the rest, we take out a bond anticipation note, and that smaller bond anticipation note is what is applied to the 47 million voter approval for TIP rather than the full, the full amount of the loan, which is just over 5.6 million. So this is better for the town, better for the TIP district. So I have new loan documents here, which were provided in the board's packet. And Patrick, actually, I am going to need your signature on a few of the pages where it says specifically select board chair, so we'll have to catch up before I'm gone.
Yeah, I will be in, um, I'll be back Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll be back Tuesday, but I can come in Wednesday.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Um, and thank you for catching up. You will be missed. Um, do we need to make a motion on this, or is it just a?
I think that you do need.
I'll make a motion to move forward the loan agreement for the Vermont State Revolving Fund loan RF 3-555-3.0, the loan amount of 5,608,850 dollars.
And this would supersede the prior document that we had signed but not submitted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, uh, any questions or discussion on this?
So just, Abby was talking about how that a lot of this is going to be forgiven through grants. Just so you know, that 5.2 million and change of it will be the discounted amount on this, so it's quite a big amount of money that doesn't need to go towards our bond debt.
Again, thank you, Abby, for catching that. That's big. All right, so having no questions, I'm going to take the call on this. Ricky, yes, no?
Yes.
On signing this newer version?
Yes.
Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I'm also yes.
And just to know, as this is going around, please don't, and can you leave the tabs on for the next?
Hold one, I want to pull the page.
Um, don't date it because there are other people that have to sign it as well, so it'll be dated as of the last signature.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I'll look at it before I leave the table.
All right.
So while that is going around, the next item is the revised 2024 TIP annual report. The board reviewed this back in February. This is a report that goes to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, and we have three new members, four new members since February. So I'll just kind of quickly go through what this report is. This is a report that goes to VEPSE every year. It's due in February. The report says due January 15th, but that's actually just for VEPSE review, and then it comes before the board in February, February, and the final report goes to VEPSE. It's a reporting of the increased taxable value, the tax increment the town received for the fiscal year, expenses the town paid on infrastructure improvements. It describes any property developments within the TIP district, talks about jobs that were created or lost in the TIP district, and gives an update on the project criteria for Killington's TIP district, which was, I think it was transportation and business development, which are criteria that needed to be met when the TIP district was approved.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the Taxing and Financing Report for 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Would you like me to go through?
Any discussion?
Would you like me to go through the changes in the report?
Well, that's why I made the motion.
Please.
So they're primarily financial changes. The first is on page two, and our votes and financing. There were, I just needed to clean it up a little bit. There's an additional information box that explains. We took out an 8.4 million dollar bond anticipation note for expenses associated with the water system and the, and the access road. And we had a DWSRF loan that would have been 100% fully forgiven. However, because we used that ban to pay some expenses, those expenses now count towards our 47 million TIP debt. So I had to reorganize and update the, the debt service under votes and financing. On the next page, on page three, under improvement expenditures, it's a similar situation. Some of those expenses for the water system phase one were actually paid for out of the ban, even though they would have been forgiven. So that means they are TIP expenditures and not non-TIP expenditures. In addition, in discussions with our bond counsel, Thomas Maloney, he pointed out that our last DWSRF loan was drafted, which was for 21 million, and a large portion of that would have been forgiven, but it was all combined in one loan. So that means the entire 21 million counts towards our 47 million dollar ban, which is why it was so important to catch up for this last, for the loan you all just approved. So I updated those numbers because I think previously, and I don't have the old version in front of me, but for water system, all of the expenses were saying they were non-TIP, but they were actually, a large portion were TIP. Under Killington Road Phase One, the actual expenses, expenses were a little bit less than what, than were originally reported. And then under sources of non-TIP revenues, I had to update, update that a bit because I had to adjust for the SRF loan that, the portion that will be forgiven. I'm just updating the reporting on that. That is the, those are the biggest changes to the report. I didn't make changes to the narrative or any of that. There is, um, the annual report will have to be recertified by the board. And that is Patrick's signature on that. So I just need the board's approval, and then I'll catch up with you, Patrick.
I'll do it Wednesday. So this is the new, this is the updated, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, does any board members have questions on this?
Yeah, I do.
Since Abby's changing it here on number one, district information, I believe we should be taking out Mary Keenan-Happ and putting Abby Sherman in and putting her now finance director, whatever the position is. Because Mary did not do any of this paperwork.
Uh, it did write in there that under date completed revised 7/31/25 by Abby Sherman.
First sheet. Change the bottom. I mean, Patrick's the one that's going to sign it. I mean, Patrick's the one that's gonna sign it, right?
Yes.
So before Patrick signs it, can you just make that change in those two boxes?
I would prefer we don't make the change, because this was previously certified by the board, submitted to VEPSE, and so we need to reflect for the record that this is a revised version, which is why under date report completed, it does say 12/31/24, which is the original completion date, and then it says revised 7/31/2025.
But the town is making changes to numbers for a person, and I, yeah, it's my wife, but I really don't care about that. I'm more about the position and who was there at the time. And for changes here, without going and putting this person's name on, the name of the person completing the report, I would, even if it was one of you guys at this table and you weren't here, I would say no. So. Because we start talking here too about some $15 million and stuff, and it goes on to about water phase one. You know, that Finance Director wasn't even here at that time, if you're honest with you, but she was here at the time to fill out the report. But she's not here today.
Is it revised again before January 15th?
So this, once it's certified, will be resubmitted to VEPSE for their files. I don't know what they need to do on their end, because in the end, this TIF annual report is incorporated into their TIF district report for the legislature, which they release in April. So they've already released a report, and we are after the fact revising our information, which affects the report that they have then submitted to the legislature.
So Patrick, you were not here at the time.
We will.
You were not here at the time. In February.
Right.
This was put to us with other numbers. Abby and Mary Ellen went over it. There were questions that were asked at that time. And since then, there's been known that there is a grant anticipation note, or bond, that you can get. Back then, there wasn't known. So that's the changes that are being made, and all I'm saying is, is that if you're gonna say that the name of the person completing the report, and you're gonna hand it in as of today, or whenever you sign it, that's just not right. That's all.
It says there is revised 7/31/25 by Abby Sherman, so.
Would you, are you, would you rather have it, are you saying completely removed, or move the revised up to?
Yeah, I'm just saying the name of the person completing the report, put the name of the person completing the revised report, whatever.
So I can see it saying, name of the person completing the report, Mary Keenan-Haff, revised 7/31/25 by Abby Sherman.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Well, but it says revised and the date reported complete. The real question is, okay, when this goes to the state, okay, how can the state put the two reports together? Okay, so the original report was completed by Mary Keenan-Haff, that's true, okay, and it has been revised by Abby Sherman, so it would seem like the revised by Abby Sherman should be up in the top line. Yeah. I mean, it just.
Yeah.
And I think that would be, that would be factually correct.
Accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, Jim, are you good with that?
Yeah, because I mean, it says date report completed.
Yeah.
But that's just completed by, but I mean.
Right. And I think that's still accurate if we say that it was completed, what, 12/31, but it was revised later on. Yeah. I would, so, yeah, let's make that change. I forget if we have a motion on the floor.
I did.
Do we have a motion on the floor for this?
I did. So I'll remove the motion, and I'll move.
Thank you.
And who seconded?
I'll remove my second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, why don't you make it, because you're the one that's suggested it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve this report with the change that the name of the person completing the report should read Mary Keenan-Haff, revised 7/31 by Abby Sherman.
Up on the top.
Up on, under the box, yeah, on the top, right.
Yeah. Cool. So that is the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All right. And any further discussion on this? All right, here are none. Let's go around the room. Jay? Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
I also am yes. Thank you, Abby, for this.
I'm just gonna pass around again, there was one last page that needs the board's signature on those bond documents, or loan documents. Last item on the agenda for FEMA TIF update is a general update, and I provided the board with a summary report. For flood recovery, six projects have been obligated for just over 1.7 million of the amount obligated, 1.4 million has been received by the town. The Highway Department has started completing the final flood recovery work on Roundabout Road, and the final lift of pavement has been applied to East Mountain Road. Bids were received, and you've already reviewed those, for on August 20th for the replacement of three culverts, we'll rebid that out. Admin Kesselring and Heritage Engineering continue to work on design plans for two proposed bridge locations at Rim Road and Ledge End Road, and a covert on Richardson Road. All three of those projects will hopefully go out to bid this fall for construction in the summer. Under Killington Forward Construction Projects for Water Contract 1 through 3A, construction of the storage tank is nearly complete. There's actually a tank walkthrough on Friday with the engineer and our water operator, Brian Heaton. The generator, the large generator for the high-service pump station was installed a few weeks ago, and testing for well number three is complete. Jeff Hoffer is preparing a source evaluation report for that, which is another step in, another step for us to receiving a source permit for that well, and then we can file an amendment with Act 250 and get that well online as well. Completion date for Contract 1 through 3A is the end of October 25. Contract 4 is continuing. We're looking at final paving for portions of it that have been, that are complete to happen this fall. Contract 5 and 6A, Dufran Group has recommended that the town bid this project out closer to when Contract 4 is completed, and that is because one requirement is needing access to potable water, potable water in order to test the water line, and they wanna make sure it's available through Contract 4 in order to do that. Then Contract 7 will be bid out at a later date to be determined once the town knows. Contracts 5 and 6A are near completion. For road construction, Phase 1B, which is Anthony Way to Route 4, the bollards should be installed tomorrow. We are continuing to negotiate with Markowski on the cobblestones, and additional plantings are anticipated to be installed per the engineering designs. Phase 1A, we are, we have 100% design plans, those are at the town office. VHB has also submitted those to USDA for their review. We need to have their approval before the project can be bid out. Phases 2 to 4, we have an RFQ out for Engineering Design Services, which was posted on July 29th, and the closing date is August 27th, so we'll have those soon. Just to note for the board, I'm also doing as much as I can a detailed summary of all of the projects, both Killington Forward and FEMA, and leaving that behind for all town staff, and also Stephanie Clark, our consultant.
Awesome, thank you.
Question on 1B, the town continues to negotiate with Markowski. The job was not done right. The job was supposed to have two to two and a half inches of the type of material to hold the bricks down, the cobblestone down. Why are we negotiating with somebody instead of just saying, do the job the way it was? Because the last meeting we were at, we were talking about a request to town, $99,000. So to take the bricks out and to put in grass, which, like, grass along the Killington Road, people pulling over it, it's gonna get destroyed, but there was a design that was made, Markowski bid on it, it was supposed to be done correctly. You and I walked the project with VHB and Markowski, and it's known that they did not do it right to hold these cobblestones down. So why is the town willing to negotiate outside the contract?
We are aware that the cobblestones, the sand that is in between the cobblestones is a maintenance requirement, is that in five years, we're going to have to replace that. That's something that the town did not contemplate when the project was bid out. They're just not going to hold up. It's not the right application for that area. We, what we are negotiating with Markowski is that, not the cost to remove them and put in grass, but we are discussing with them, we know that the cobblestones were not installed per the bid specs, and we are not going to pay 100% for that line item. But it's difficult to put a dollar value on the amount that was not completed, and so that is what we are discussing with Markowski.
I'll wait to see what the.
Thank you.
Wouldn't the dollar value for replacement be, it would cost the town in five years to rip those up and do them over again?
It wouldn't be to rip them off. It would be, the thing that was there was to reseal.
To reseal, okay, yeah. Would that be the?
So there was a plan that we knew, that every five years, there would have to be another coating put on top.
Okay, and was that in the original bid, from the original construction?
No, because the original construction is for one time.
One time, okay.
And then the town will have to maintain.
Every five years.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the town's gonna have to maintain maybe, I don't know, every other year or every year. Cars pulling in off the road, getting the grass.
Increased maintenance at the time would be required for, because that's really what the cost is to us. Okay, versus having Markowski do the job correctly.
Oh, you'll definitely have people pulling over for sure.
I mean, we could have the job, we could have Markowski redo the job, the cobblestone. That's an option. The cobblestone is too wide, there is about maximum an inch of poly instead of five inches. Yes. The gap, they're, they're too far apart, but the depth of the poly should have been five inches, and it's maximum one inch.
So you need to have Markowski go in and do the job correct, and then see how long it holds up. And in five years, we have to do some other coating over it, then we do some coating over it, but why are we going to negotiate? I don't know. Anybody, then I guess with a contract, could just mess up and then just don't hold it to it.
All right. Thank you for the brief, Abby. Are you, does anyone else have any questions from the board for colleagues about TIF? What am I?
Andrew? When it comes around, I think, I mean, but this board is supposed to be giving directions of how to move forward, and I don't.
I think your direction is correct, that Markowski needs to be held to the contract. Yeah.
Right, and deal with the five inches and go from there.
Okay.
Let's put it on the agenda, I guess, whatever, for if the board wants to make a decision and goes for whatever. Why are we gonna continue to have legal discuss? What's hurting the contract?
For point of clarification, legal is not discussing.
Okay, or town, or town employees, other than just saying, or, or maybe it should go to legal, and legal just say, this is what you're supposed to do, and you put down one inch instead of five inches, so that's a job right.
So I'm misunderstanding, Jim, are you making a motion?
No.
Okay.
No.
My apologies.
I'm just having a conversation here, that's saying, I think we should hold Markowski to the contract. And that's it.
Andrew, you have a question related to TIF?
Actually, I'd like to, I'd like to have a discussion about the cobblestone. Two years ago, I was sitting in this room with Patrick, you're sitting next to me, with Francis Leguero also present, Jim used to be a chairman at that time, and I questioned the stupid design.
I was not a chairman, thank you.
I questioned the design, and I mentioned that the cobblestone is not gonna work, and Jim asked me if I'm an engineer. I said, I'm a stonemason, I've done them, patios, chimneys, everything. And that looked like a disaster, and he questioned, am I an engineer? Patrick, do you remember that?
Do you remember two years ago that I said that Andrew was not an engineer?
I do.
Yeah, I kinda remember it too.
Yeah, so Patrick does remember this.
I remember it also.
Since, since Jim said, you're not an engineer, let's trust the engineers. So that were your exactly words. So now, we spent $260,000 plus $99,000 to rip it all out to repair, and I know you're saying that they were not supposedly installed properly, one inch or five inches. That design was faulty from the beginning, because trucks were gonna drive over it, heavy trucks. After it was installed, we saw Green Mountain Power trucks, Markowski trucks, some other guys who broke down on the hill, they parted, and then each time they moved, they pushed the cobblestone down. That was a faulty design from the beginning, and you wanted to move forward with that design. So since you're the guy who questioned my expertise, knowing that I'm a stonemason, I, I believe you should be volunteering and pulling the 12,807 stones by hand with the other selectmen, who also were present in that room when I questioned the design. And now, we have $350,000 disaster on our hands, and you were part of that disaster. I looked up, the price, the pallet of stone is $528 for 50 cobblestones. I, I walked up and down, and I counted twice, and my number is 12,807 cobblestones are right there. And every row, there were seven of them, every other row, they were cut in half. So two weeks ago, three weeks ago, there, I heard at the meeting that they were supposed to be removed. I actually called every selectman, except you, of course, and I called the town manager, and I requested to postpone it and not to remove them from the ground, because we need to have a plan, because now they're not brand new, they're gonna be reused. If we decide to pull them out and do something else with it, it's gonna cost more money. But the biggest problem is also safety. When people walk up and down, or even kids ride the bikes, somebody can slide or cross the line and kill them. I believe there should be a double-sided guardrail installed for protection, people walking on that hill. And that, of course, that's gonna add an extra probably $100, $150,000 to the bill. But my main question is when, two years ago, you made the decision, did you contact the road foreman, Ricky Bowen, who's sitting right there next to you, did you ask him, hey, Ricky, this is your road, you're in charge, what do you think about this project? My question is to you, Jim, did you ask road foreman anything about his opinion about that? Because you made a decision yourself with the other selectmen without talking to the guy who was on the road.
Did I make a decision on my own, or did I make it with the other selectmen?
You're the one sitting right now.
And as far as a guardrail goes, I'm gonna ask you a question, Andrew. Are you an engineer? I gotta ask you the question, are you an engineer? We hired VHB. VHB is the engineering firm. We hired Stephanie Clark. We've hired lawyers. We did stuff. If you wanna continue to come in here and try to destroy me, or whatever, continue. I welcome it, I smile back at you, okay? You have made so many errors in just this last three minutes, because when Abby was here, two weeks ago for a Monday night meeting, there was no discussion of removing the bricks. So thank God you came in and told the town manager not to remove them. The discussion back on that last meeting, whoa, 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 the discussion back on that last meeting was, is that they're still in negotiations, and there was a suggestion of removing the bricks, but they were still negotiating, and it may go to legal, because I think Rob Kropowski that was sitting in front of you was here. So please, when you're gonna say something, please say it.
I would like to, I would like, Patrick, because there was, we discussed that they're gonna, we're gonna agree with Markowski and start pulling them out. That's where I started.
I would like, I would like a point of order for the meeting, okay? We've, we've already had the conversation that we expect Markowski to do the. We've, we've already had the conversation that we expect Markowski to do the job according to the contract, okay? If Markowski has issues with the contract, or if the town has issues with the design, okay, the engineer who did the design should be consulting to Markowski to figure out how to fix the job, okay? But we're not gonna accomplish anything further by arguing it here tonight.
Correct.
Thank you both.
I would also like to point out, I would also like to point out that since VHB was the engineering firm, and they were supposed to oversee the installation of the cobblestones, and they did not pick up on it. Actually, it was me driving down the road, thinking there was snake skin on the cobblestone. I pulled over on a Thursday and walked and took pictures of it, and I walked with Abby, and I walked with VHB, and I walked it with Markowski, and they tried saying it must have happened over the weekend, and I said, no, these pictures were taken last week, all right? So, VHB should have something in on this also.
They should have skin in the game as well.
Because they are the ones that are supposed to oversee, because they were hired on to oversee that everything was installed properly.
Abby, I see your hand up there.
I need to, I need to state a point of clarification.
Yeah.
A couple of months ago, David and I brought this to the board, that cobblestones were not going to work, and we needed to find an alternative option. That is when we first started talking about it. It wasn't two weeks ago, and we have been talking about it for a few months now, to find a better, more permanent solution that doesn't have continued town maintenance.
And all I'm saying is that grass would be continuing, and dirt would continue in that area to have continuing. And all I said was, is that two weeks ago, Andrew said that we had already decided that we were gonna pull all the bricks up, but you are correct, Abby, that you and whoever else are to work to find out, as Bill is suggesting with the engineering firm, and it should be no cost to the town, is all I'm getting at. It should be no cost, no matter what the decision is.
All right, thank you, Jim. Moving on to discussion appointment of water commissioners.
Patrick, I think Craig had a question, had his hand up.
Thank you.
Never mind.
Someone else does?
Okay.
You've got another question, Patrick.
Oh, there is? Okay. One other question on this.
So, just to affirm, we have a legal binding contract that's been signed by both parties that one party is in breach due to failure performance, correct?
There are, my understanding is that there is question about whether something was installed in spec. We believe it is not, and we are figuring out the remedy currently.
I like the point that it's been said, even by Abby here, that it was supposed to be five inches, and it was only put down as one inch. So, there's no discussion of if it wasn't or if it was. It was not put...
Is there spacing issue as well?
Right. Yes, thank you, Jim, for clarification. So, that, that's what I can tell you, I mean, we're working on it, the town's working on it, and it's still in flux. All right, moving on to water commission.
You got another question, citizen's concerns?
When you guys do the road, because there's three different pieces, I brought it up earlier.
Hold on, hold on, we're not in citizen's concerns?
No, it's about what you were just talking about.
What's that?
About the cobblestone and stuff. The road, I'm just trying to say, when you guys make your final decisions, make everything equal, you know what I'm saying? Because there's three different pieces, I've mentioned it before, three different ways you made that sidewalk. You understand, one has black, one has this, one, you know what I'm saying? When you guys do make your decision, try to make a uniform going straight up the thing would be cool.
Yeah, I agree. All right, thank you. Discussion appointment of water commissioners is, Abby, is this under you?
Actually, Brian Heaton is going to cover this, and I'm just here for help if needed.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome, Brian. I want to introduce yourself, since it's your first meeting, I'm sorry about that.
What's going on, guys? It's Brian, and I've met most of you guys.
Hey, Brian.
Good to see you.
I got a little bit lured here just about the commission, so I'll pass them out now.
We will give you leeway.
I appreciate it. I also, dang, that's a deal.
And sorry about my lighting.
No worries, I wish I could get you a copy digitally if I knew.
You're gonna have gray on that.
Gotcha, should be.
There you go, too.
All right. Cool deal, guys, all right. So, yeah, I'm just, wanted to come in and talk a little bit about the water commission. You know, stated in the ordinance, talks about the commission as a hand in selecting and appointing five commissioners, so I'm just bringing forward a little bit of information about the people who've reached out so far, and just trying to see if anyone that we know has any sort of interest going forward, and how we wanna go about vetting, and, you know, looking at each person's experience, and how we go about selecting them. So, in everyone's hands, who has them, we just have some information about the commission, and then, so far, we've had four people reach out and an affirmative. So, we've had Ethan Phelps, if you skip around, he does some water work over for the Killington Resort, have his information, he actually included an extensive, what is experience and resume, which is great. We have Phil Black, we have a Michael Tamsen, and an Art Malazzi, and they all include just a little bit of a blurb, and that's the only, the information that we wanted to grab from them right now, as we just kinda figure out how we wanna proceed going forward.
If anyone else has advice, feel free to jump in. I think what you're grabbing makes sense, just a little snippet of, are, are you affected by this, you know, are you on the water line? Do you have any history being on boards? And, you know, what, what is your interest? But I think that's great, that you got this together.
Well, yeah, and I apologize, we also had Chris Carr said that if he were, were to be asked, he would definitely be interested in joining up as well. I apologize, that's someone I met.
So, since we have...
Also, Robert Salmeri would be interested in it.
Great, gotcha.
Yeah.
So, now you're up to six. Can we just put it on the next board meeting, so we can have a discussion of, and we can talk to Chris Carr, and we can talk to Robert Salmeri?
Yeah, that'd be great. We need, you know, was a mix of three people who are connected or leased to the system, or leasing property system, and then two of them, don't have to be. I don't remember exactly what the mix is for the people we have there, but, you know...
So, how do you do that? Because my question is gonna be, I thought I saw something in the paper saying that anyone that was going to, and I could be wrong here, but, because now it's the team members not on, or whatever, okay? But some of these folks up and down the Killington Road, what if they, they come on the board and they, it said that you need to hook into the water? I believe that was in the ad.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me.
I don't have the ad in front of me either.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having that discussion.
But I believe the ad's saying that anyone that wants to join this commission needs to...
Within 12 months.
Within 12 months, join. So, you know, you got six. I like Art, but he's never gonna hook onto the water system unless he moves into an area away from Robin.
So, this thing that, that Brian handed out to you is a section from the water ordinance.
Yeah, I know that.
Right there, well, hold on, Jim, let me finish. And it says right here, "The five commissioners shall be comprised of at least three persons owning or leasing properties connected to the water system."
But I'm just saying what was put out in the newspaper, so I didn't know if something changed from there, because there's also, this was supposed to be a working document. There are six people. Can we just put this on an agenda for another, and you talked to Chris Carr and Robert Salmeri, as I know it's just Sal. We'll put that out two years ago.
For clarification, the ad said the same as the ordinance, the only language that we changed was that they needed to connect to the water system within 12 months of it being available. So, it is still at least three who own or lease property and will be connected to the water system, and the other two can be at large.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for getting this rolling, it's very important.
Of course.
So, yeah, we'll make sure to have it on, so that we can, you know, make, again, check with everyone that if you would be connecting, or if you're not, so we can separate those groups, to make sure we have that correct mix.
I wanna be on it, I may not hook up, and I don't get it, but whatever. Just go for the six people.
Yeah, and if, if in the future they don't connect, we'll address it when it comes.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Looking forward to it.
The agenda?
Now you add citizen's concerns.
We are going to second round citizen's input and comment concerns. We'll go online first, if there's anyone online, sorry. Forgot about you last time. All right, if there's any questions online, please raise your hand. Drop in comments. Not seeing any. We'll go to the room. Any citizens' comments, concerns in the room? Something that has not been on the agenda? Yes, Andrew?
Andrew, get it. I would like to follow up about the heights. I know Dave worked into it and talked to the waters and found some information. Dave, do you mind just sharing it with us?
There was some concern on how the tax sale process was completed on the sale of the heights when the town acquired it at tax sale. The town acquired it with about $600,000 worth of delinquent taxes on sewer and taxes. The town sold it for a significantly less amount, saying that the, the sewer taxes were to be completely zeroed out with no interest and penalty or anything. It was not done by the Board of Abatement, which it should have been. And for the tax sale, you could sell the property for whatever was owed in taxes of water and sewer and collect that money back, but the decision was made to not do that and sell it for a significantly less amount. So, I did speak with Attorney Barlow on the process, and he had explained to me that he was part of the process up until the point, so the 1061 notice, which goes in the paper for the tax sale, and after that, he was not consulted with after. So, we definitely, and I think it's from what, the, the funds that were, that were forgiven, could certainly have an effect on the small sewer system that we have for the town. So, that should have been paid back to the sewer department and not abated, and collected at the sale, when we sold it.
So, are we now going around and having conversations with, we're on, we're on one, we're on question. So, I, I actually have the accurate...
Andrew, hold on one second. Did you have something on this?
Yeah, I think this should be put on an agenda item, because there is just certain things that even Dave is saying that is not correct, but I think it should be, instead of coming in here and having a citizen bring something out, like, there is a statute, there is a statute, Patrick, of, and Jim Barlow was in the process of allowing the board to appoint some person to bid on the property, which wasn't really the property, it was development rights. And the way that it had to happen, and I know Mr. Gieda has gone around telling people that he wanted to buy this property, but he had every right to buy it, because per Mr. Barlow's instructions to the board, the board could not, whatever the dollar amount was, could not say the $600,000. It had to wait for going once, going twice, going three, and then Mr. Barlow said, would the town like to? So, then the town bought, didn't buy the property, the town took control of the property, okay? And then the town has the right later on to sell it. It doesn't have to sell it for what was owed, okay? It doesn't. And there is a statute that states that a town can make an agreement with a property owner for easements if it empowers or embeders for sewer, water, or town right of way. But since, I'm just gonna get like shocked here, can we just put, can we put it on the agenda?
Abatement of the taxes and fees associated.
And, and Mr. Barlow was contacted, and Mr. Barlow said that he was not into doing the sale, and that Jeremy Farkas would be the better person to handle it, and that is the attorney that we use to go through. That's all. So, I would like, I'd like to finish, finish this, guys, I'd like to square this once and for all. So, after talking to attorneys and finding all the information, the town did not hire a realtor to reappraise the property. That's what we found out after pulling all the information. So, $172,000. So, we paid $631,000, we...
We paid.
And then, and then, we sold it quietly for $172,000. So, what happened to the difference? Michael Ramsey emailed Mona in writing, June 25th...
I think we should put it on.
No, I'd like to finish, I'd like to finish, this is important, so everybody knows what we're talking about. So, Michael Ramsey knew he had no right to, to do the sale. So, he covered his butt, he emailed Mona saying, on the June 25th last year, saying that this has to go to the Civil Board of Abatement. So, selectmen sit on the Civil Board of Abatement, they know the procedure, and yet, selectmen, Jim and the other two, they knew what they were doing. So, in the same building, public safety building, what happened at the meeting, at the executive session, Jim Haff yelled and screamed at Michael Ramsey, because he didn't want to cave in, and signed this fraudulent sale. Firefighters heard, some other people heard, I talked to the selectman who told me, like, yeah, we were just shocked, we were standing listening how Jim was yelling at Michael Ramsey. Michael Ramsey caved in and signed the document. So, what is, our taxpayers, we, we got screwed out of possibly a million dollars or $2 million.
Andrew, Andrew, we'll stop you there.
Thank you, Patrick.
We will discuss this.
The property was up for sale for $850,000 for 15 years, and it never sold, and there is no property, it was development rights.
Discuss it. All right. Any other citizens' comments or concerns? No. All right, moving next on to, select board member comments and concerns.
Yeah, I've got something.
Go ahead. Who was that?
That's me, Rick. No, I just wanna say about the last board meeting, I think it was, I think we actually owe Dave an apology, because I think that was a little bit out of line, it should have been an executive session, and I don't speak on behalf of everybody, but that's how I feel about it.
All right, good, Dave, I second that, that's...
Yep.
I should have dropped that earlier.
Yep, I'm with you on that one. And I'll just state that, once again, all I did was read out a contract during a budget discussion, and said, if you wanna save money, here's the way. And I read the part out about the salary that I read out on March 24th to 28th, whatever it was, March 18th I think it was.
Anyone else have, select board member comments or concerns?
Yeah, I have a concern, or I have a comment here. I mean, if, if we're just gonna have people coming in here, and like Andrew going and having meetings with people, and coming in, trying to, I guess, and Andrew's wanting to destroy Jim Haff, I think that's what he's told some people in town, just please, I'm a board member, I've, I've given you folks, when, you know, when Ricky and Patrick, when you came on, and we hadn't decided on a town manager at the time, I gave you the decency, I was polite, I was respectful, and said, let's let the three of us do the interviews, okay? Then, when we were going into doing things like, I guess we were gonna do policy, but that seems to just keep on getting pushed out again, or whatever, and then we were gonna do some other, we were gonna do the, what's the other one that Andrew keeps on, ethics, you know? I pushed that out to a meeting when the five of us were gonna go here. So, you know, instead of me coming here to a meeting and just, you know what, like, Andrew, you might as well, we might as well go to a six-person select one, because I think that's the only way you'll get on, but that's what maybe we should do, so you can, you can sit at the table. No, 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 this is, no, no, you don't, this is selectmen's comments or concerns. You're the chair, you're the chair, and I'm just making a comment here. So, you know what, this is going to be, I guess, fun until March of 2027. That's all. Thank you.
All right, managers' report, or I'm sorry, does it, Jay, Phil, you have anything?
No.
I also do not. Managers' report.
So, paving started last... So paving started last week in town, the milling and on West Hill Road. Abby mentioned that East Mountain, the drive course was done. I did speak with Mike Mullin from Pike today, so the paving will continue on River Road. That will be done this week. West Hill and Winterberry either the end of this week or the beginning of next week. Our new finance director started today. Her name is Kirsten Hathaway. She was a former town clerk in Rutland Town. She comes from a lot of experience and we're pretty excited to have her start today. I'd also like to introduce Matt Trombley, who's sitting right there. He is, sure, he's our acting fire chief right now, hopefully more later.
John, Matt Trombley. Hey, guys. Hi, Matt.
Came in at a pretty crucial time and Jason Norton was just exiting and everything, so.
Jay, let me just meet you.
We're excited to have him here. He's, he's got a, he's got a spiel, so.
I just wanted a chance to meet you all and Dave said, jumped in both feet first, literally my first week. Native from honor, 37 years in the fire service, grew up right in the town of Pittsburgh and that's where I still reside. I spent 24 years with the city of Burlington as a career firefighter, retired out of there and 20 years with the Vermont Fire Academy. So fourth generation firefighter from my hometown and know a lot of people around the region and interested in trying to help shape the department and look towards the future. Learning a lot about the town. Killington's a lot different than Pittsburgh, but I've got a lot to learn and certainly wanted to have a chance just to introduce myself and meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Good, yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, yeah.
Just another note, Highway, Chad Galliano, who's been working with us for eight months maybe now, he's, he's acting as interim foreman. We are potentially looking for more folks to come work for Highway. Definitely having issues with people that have CDLs already, it's not really as commonplace as it was before, so we did have a guy start and a week later decided it wasn't for him, so, which can happen. So we're going to move forward with that, try to get some new folks in there as well. Couple of things that have been mentioned through the last few meetings, one was a forensic audit. I did speak with Ron at RHR Smith today about that he is actually a certified forensic auditor. So he's going to send us a scope of work and a cost estimate and hopefully that is affordable and will happen. Another thing that I looked into and moving forward with is Nemrick. Well, before we had actually hired a finance director, we'd been speaking with Nemrick about how to get help. And for those who don't know, Nemrick is like the operating system that the town clerks and everybody uses for our AP and all kinds of stuff, everything, everything finance-wise. So Cynthia is going to be coming to Killington on Wednesday or Thursday this week, I can't remember the day. We've, we've agreed to have her here for like 96 hours is what their, their contract is. It's just under 10 grand. They're going to work with our new finance director, work with the folks already in place, do actually an assessment of how things are being done in the town office and offer suggestions, training, whatever. So we're excited to move forward with that, too. And I think that's all I have right now.
Excellent. Thank you, Dave. Great to hear about continued education. Next up, we do have executive session. Make sure that's next. Yep. We have an executive session. Any action will be taken in public, but we are going to discuss on personnel and contract and legal prior to coming out and making it public. So if we could pause it, again, the select board is.
Before you pause, I would just like, before you pause, Patrick, I'd like to say that Jim Haff is leaving the meeting, so.
Okay. And also, before we pause, Jim Haff, you're more than welcome to be part of this. It's every select board member, Dave, you can also come in. You are more than invited to come, Jim.
Don't feel comfortable going in with you guys at the last time, so thank you.
Yep, that is fine. We will, after recording.
Recording stopped.
And logistically, is it best to?
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Recording in progress.
John has a question.
So Patrick, I assume you'll be discussing the contractual situation as it relates to the town manager's contract during this period?
I'm sorry, cut out, we got past last part.
Will you be discussing the town manager's existing contract during your executive session? Is that why you're moving to executive session?
We are going into executive sessions for personnel contracts and legal. We will, when we come out, we will have more to say.
Okay, so therefore, would it make sense that there could be a conflict of interest for anybody who's a town employee to participate in such a conversation?
No.
No?
Why don't we go into executive session?
No?
Patrick, I have no problem staying out of the executive session, it's not a big deal.
There's two members up there who are both town employees, three including Mr. Haff, that, well, I know that, but my point is, it's a conflict of interest to be discussing your boss's contract, I'm sorry.
No, I would, I would have to disagree with that. Listen, I have to disagree with that because the select board is the town manager's boss. I just, straight out, the select board is the town manager's boss. They are the ones that do the hiring and firing and everything else. But what I just don't understand is going to an executive session to, I don't know, maybe alter a contract that's already signed by the town. That's all. So you guys can go into.
Are you guys discussing this after your executive session? Or will we hold this to the next meeting? So we all don't have to sit around here waiting to come back?
I would hope that we come out with some action, but I can't guarantee you anything because I'm just one person.
But could it go to the, could you do your executive session and you bring it up in the next meeting?
I don't.
Till a further date.
You'd have to make the motion.
I'm fine with staying.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait, we'll wait.
I think it should be time.
Okay. Let's pause and go to executive session.